I call this special meeting of the City of Pahokee to order Thursday, June twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, to order at four oh three P. M. May we please stand for the invocation provided by Commissioner Mike Fearsen, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we just thank you for another opportunity to come before your presence, Father. I ask that you, for your divine leadership and your divine wisdom, Father, that whatever we do here today, that it will be pleasing in your sight, Father. Father, we just thank you and give you all the praise in Jesus's name. Amen.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Vice Mayor Cowan Williams. Commissioner Bolden.
Present.
Commissioner McPherson.
Present.
Commissioner Scott.
Present.
City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Clerk is present.
Thank you, City Clerk. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank our audience for those who are listening and tuning in on social media. Good evening. The purpose of our special call mean today is to entertain Resolution twenty-two twenty-five dash thirty-six. We'll have our City Attorney reading into the records.
My, my, in the opinion, then Commissioner Bolden is appear by phone?
Yes, he's on.
Uh, don't the commission have to vote to approve that?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm, I'm.
No, you don't.
I make a motion that we allow him to appear by phone, Commissioner Bolden to appear by phone.
Second.
Okay, has been moved by Commissioner Mike Fearsen and second by Commissioner Scott to allow Commissioner Bolden to appear by, by phone. Call for questions. Hearing the honor, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
And Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion passes by unanimous vote. Now we'll move to our topic. We'll have our resolution read into the minutes by our City Attorney.
Attorney Weeks?
Too proud of me, sir.
Yes. Yes.
Um, do you have the resolution in front of you or no?
Can you read it, please?
Um, yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number twenty-two five thirty-eight, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, accepting the external auditor's report on the audit of the City of Pahokee financial statements and single audit for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, as set forth in composite exhibit A attached hereto, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Clerk. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioner, each local governmental entity that is required for an annual audit under state statute two eighteen must submit a copy of the audit report and annual financial report within forty-five days after the completion of the audit report, but no later than nine months after the end of the fiscal year. Resolution twenty-two five thirty-eight establishes that the City of Pahokee is in compliance with this statutory requirement as it confirms the acceptance of the external auditor's report on the audit of the City of Pahokee financial statements and single audit for the fiscal year ending two thousand twenty-four.
At this time, City Manager, would you introduce our auditor and proceed with the overview of the audit?
Yes, sir. Now, we will have representatives from HCT Certified Public Accountants and Consultants LLC in the person of Mr. Navarette, present here with us today, and also Mr. Harvey joining us via Zoom. Mr. Navarette.
Yes. So, good day. My name is Rob Harvey, and you should have on your screen the auditor's presentation. Is it up?
No, sir.
Okay, um, is it possible?
Yes. It's stuck. It's up now.
Okay. Good day, everyone. Again, my name is Rodrick Harvey, partner with HCT Certified Public Accountants. Um, in your presence is Mr. Leo Navarette, who's the supervising senior for, uh, the engagement. We were engaged to perform the audit of September, next slide, please. We were engaged to perform the audit of the City of Pahokee for the year September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, our engagement letter, one slide back, our engagement letter was dated April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, we have rendered an unmodified opinion on several of the funds, and we've qualified two business-type funds, which is the Marina and the Cemetery Funds. Next slide, please. Over the next few minutes, we will spend time talking about the audit results, the supplementary slides for RSI, uh, required communications, and the tripartary responsibilities. Next slide, ladies. This slide discusses that we have performed our audit in accordance with GAAS generally accepted auditing standards to ensure that the city is reflecting its financial statements in accordance with GAAP, and we have applied uniform guidance from a federal level and the Florida Single Audit Act if, uh, needed, if required. We planned our audit procedures, and there was no changes to our audit strategy for the year ended September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. We have completed and issued all necessary auditor's reports. There are no outstanding matters in all significant accounting policies and procedures are detailed in note one of the financial state. Next slide, please. As it relates to, I had significant accounting estimates, we deemed those as allowance for doubtful accounts.
Mr. Harvey?
Appreciate, yes?
Yes, I'm not seeing the presentation that you have in the documents that we have.
It wouldn't be in the documents. It wouldn't be in the documents.
Okay, um, I see it on the screen. We emailed it over to, um, the city a while ago. I want to say yesterday or so, uh, two days ago. Is it possible that we can, um, I'm, I'm not sure.
They have, they have the actual audit report. They just don't have your presentation, which it was provided to the audio team. We don't normally provide presentations, but the presentation is on the screen for the audio team to display.
He's just providing a summary. What's in the packet?
Angle. I see it, but I can't see it.
Yes, yes.
All right, shit, that's, all right, just go ahead.
Did I continue?
Yes.
I'm not sure if I heard a yes.
Yes. Yes, you may.
Go ahead.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Uh, we're on slide four. Four. Significant risks are deemed as management overrides of control and revenue recognition, and there are no new accounting pronouncements that affected the city's financial statements for the year under audit, again, which is September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Next slide, please. There are no uncorrected, uh, misstatements to report, and any notes or errors or, I'm sorry, let me tell you that. Any corrections to the financial statements were posted during our audit, and there are no matters to report as relates to financial presentation or disclosure. As relates to control deficiencies, we will discuss those, uh, related party issues, nothing to report. And if the financial statements are used in any other financial document or activity, we ask that we be made aware of that issue, for example, a debt. As you can see, next slide, please. Slide seven. One more, should be one or two more slides. There we go. As you can see from this doc, this, this document, this deck is our required communications to you. Uh, us as the external auditors, you as those charged with governance, and you can see that we have no matters to report. I will highlight a fl- a few for you. Illegal acts and fraud, we have no matters to report. Noncompliance with laws and regulations, no matters to report. Other findings, no matters to report. Uh, no disagreements with management, and, uh, no management consultations with other outside accountants. Next slide, please. Based on GAAS and AICPA guidance, we are deemed as independent. Next slide, please. Next two slides. We will now spend time talking about the financial results of the organization. Next slide, please. Again, we performed our audit in accordance with GAAS to ensure that the city is reflecting its financial statement in accordance with GAAP. As relates to revenues, revenues for the period ended September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, eight point six million as compared to eight million for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. We selected a sample of significant transactions, uh, in the revenue stream and tested those revenue transactions for existence, accuracy, and presentation of revenues as relates to expenses, uh, six point six million for two thousand twenty-four as compared to six point nine million in expenditures for two thousand twenty-three. We selected a sample of expenditure transactions and tested those expenditure transactions for completeness, accuracy, and the pre.
Mr. Harvey, could you just briefly pause for a minute? We have some, uh, communication from the commission. Uh, I would like to ask if possible.
We had it before.
Let me, let me, I know, let me finish. Ms. Clerk, would you be able to pull that report up and forward it to each of the commissioners?
So, again, all of the commissioners have the actual report. This is just his presentation, which is.
We're talking about the presentation. Are you able to pull it up?
Yes, I can forward it. I received it today, but I can forward it.
Thank you.
That's all I'm saying. I just want to be able to follow along.
I understand you. That's why I'm trying to get to what you need.
But I don't have the computer, so I'm just trying to.
Okay, I see now. Okay, and you don't have it on your phone, yeah?
I didn't bring the city phone. No, I didn't, the phone, I didn't bring the city phone.
Are you looking for the, because this is the presentation. You're looking for the report?
We had it last time. No, the presentation. I got the report. Like, if I had any questions as he's going along, I need to be able to.
They didn't, we didn't provide that the last time.
Yes, we did. We had his presentation as he went along.
It was on the screen, but it wasn't provided. But I could send it to you.
Well, I just need something to go along with to write on if I have questions as he's going, because I can't, I'm not going to remember going back. I understand it's the audit, but if I have questions, I need, I just wanted something in front of me. So, I'm just trying to figure out how it can be affected immediately.
I'll send it.
Mrs. Jackson would allow you to use his computer to follow along?
So, we can't get copies, so everybody can hear, but I'm, I guess they might have.
Where we gonna get copies from? We're gonna get the actual report. That's the quickest we can get.
The report is actually provided, so that's.
You don't have you in on your phone either?
I didn't even bring my phone. My phone's hanging.
When it come up, I can let you use my phone, and I can, I can.
You know, you know what?
It's not this.
What may be helpful as Mr. Harvey, as you're going over, if you can allude to, if, if you have the capabilities to allude to where, uh, the areas that you're going over, where is located at in the actual report. I'm not sure if you can do that, and that'll give us exactly what we need, because everything that you're presenting is a part of the actual overall report. Does that make sense?
No, it makes sense. Um, I'm trying to think through the ease, a way to easily do this. Uh, Leo, we can point them to the M D N A, uh, so they can see the comparative. The M D N A starts on what page?
Um, hold on for a minute. Let me take a look. It begins on page five.
Okay. Um, on page six is that the, um, comparative, what page starts the comparative for the, uh, for the income statement? Uh, the statement of activities should be page six or seven.
Page nine.
Okay. All right. So, I will reference to the elected officials, page nine, in your audit document.
That's the, that's his page nine and not the squared number. So, his page nine is the same thing as that your page eighteen in your package. You there?
I'm here, yes. So, I, I, I'm referencing, okay, so then I am referring to page eighteen in your supporting documents for the agenda, which is actual page nine, I imagine, in the audit book.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I will go back to the top and, um, just, uh, thank you, Commissioner, for that. I do want to make sure y'all can follow along and, and, and no questions. So, as relates to revenues, revenues for the year September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, and these are rounded numbers, eight point six million as compared to eight million for the year two thousand twenty-three. Uh, again, we tested those transactions, those revenue transactions for existence, accuracy, and presentation. As relates to expenses, expenses for the twenty-four year, six point six million uh, as compared to six point nine million for the twenty-three year. Uh, we tested those expenditure transactions for completeness, accuracy, and presentation. Next slide, please. As relates to capital assets, uh, for September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, sixteen point eight million as compared to fifteen point one million for the twenty-three year. Uh, long-term debt, which the city has done a good job of managing, uh, long-term debt is down eight, three hundred and eighty-two thousand for two thousand twenty-four as compared to four hundred and nine thousand for two thousand twenty-three. Next slide. We have a responsibility to report to you as the elected officials regarding any deficiencies. We do evaluate the control environment, although we do not express an opinion on it. Uh, next slide, please. There are two types of deficiencies that we will report if found. Uh, a significant deficiency, which is a deficiency in the control environment, uh, that's not a material weakness yet, important enough to be reported to those charged with governance. And then a material weakness, which is a weakness or a series of weaknesses, uh, that are strong enough that there's a reasonable possibility that the financial statements of the organization, uh, that any issues, any misstatements will not be prevented or detected on a timely basis. Next slide, ladies. Over the years, we have had, uh, various management letter findings. Uh, for the current year, we have, uh, one finding which relates to purchases not properly approved and supported. A sample of purchases was made by the city's credit card. Two transactions, we had no vendor invoice, and two transactions lacked appropriate level of approval. Uh, this, the effect is not being in compliance with city's policies and procedures. Uh, we recommend that management enforce or reinforce compliance with city policies as relates to purchases and use of the credit card. Management responded, uh, management is addressing the corrective action, aligning and updating the purchasing policy and credit card policy. The city will impose disciplinary procedures for noncompliance with policies. The rest of our discussion will center around prior year findings, and as we know, some of these findings go back years. Uh, they will remain until they are kept, until they are cleared. Uh, the first finding relates to.
Mr. Harvey, Mr. Harvey, if you will, this, this.
Page seventy-nine and eighty-eight.
See if we can catch up with the documents to make sure that everyone is on the page, same page.
I found that on seventy-nine and eighty-eight, what he's going over now. The, uh, prior year's findings.
If you, um, have access to your emails on your phones, the presentation has been sent.
His page seventy-nine.
This is prior findings. I think that's where he is. The first.
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct. You are, you are right with, yeah, prior year findings, um, M L twenty-ten dash oh-one.
This is from.
All right.
Are we able to ask a question as we're on line, so we don't have to go back, Mayor Bab, or are we waiting until the end?
I guess, I asked the.
Oh, are we able to ask questions now, or we gonna wait till the end?
Or would he prefer?
Uh, Mr. Harvey, do you want to finish the presentation and then go over questions? Or do you want to address the questions as they come along?
Yeah, we have a slide for questions, so I would like to finish the presentation, and then once we get to the slide for Q and A, we can entertain all questions at that time.
All right, understood.
Thank you for helping me out with the appropriate page. I believe we're on page seventy-nine, which will follow the, or highlight the prior findings. Uh, the first prior year finding, twenty-ten oh-one, relates to performance, performance of a fiscal count of inventories. We discussed this. We reviewed it, and we have deemed this findings as partially implemented. Another prior year finding is twenty-fourteen oh-four, which relates to, uh, credit card activity. And again, we have noted it as partially implemented. Uh, the city has made some changes to their processes and will continue to review policies and procedures, uh, with credit card use. Uh, the next finding relates to twenty-fifteen oh-one. Uh, the city has not established adequate controls for completeness of revenues and unearned revenues at the Marina and Campground. We have deemed, uh, this finding as partially implemented. Uh, controls over the Marina, revenues have improved with updated policies and procedures. The next prior year finding relates to, uh, twenty-sixteen oh-one. The city has not adequately trained, uh, staff as relates to purchasing, uh, procedures, and management has not adequately, uh, monitored. Uh, we deem this finding as partially implemented. Twenty-seventeen oh-one, uh, revolves around the Marina and Campground Fund continuing to experience this loss, to continuing to experience losses. Uh, again, uh, this is not find, this is not implemented or cleared, uh, because both funds, Marina, uh, Campground, and the Cemetery Fund continue to show losses. Moving over to, uh, our next discussion, management is responsible for the financial statements and also the control environment implementing. The commission, uh, the elected officials is tasked with oversight of the financial reporting process and internal controls. And of course, we as your auditors are tasked with auditing and reporting to you those findings that we find. Next slide. Um, if we should have any errors or issues that we know, we are required to communicate with you, the manager, any of those issues, and we do by way of written document and by this verbal presentation. Uh, at this time, next slide, please pull up the question slide. At this time, I will do myself with, do my very best with my teammate, Mr. Leo Navarette, to answer any of, any and all questions that you have. Next slide, next slide.
To questions, please.
Slide to questions. At this time, Mayor Bab, I am open to doing the very best I can with my teammate, Mr. Leo Navarette, to answer any and all questions that you and any of the elected officials may have of us.
Thank you, sir. We're gonna start with the Vice Mayor. She has a few questions she would like to ask of you.
Okay.
Um, good evening. How are you? My first question is on page seventy-nine. You were going kind of fast. I was trying to keep up. On page seventy-nine, where you talk about twenty-two four oh-one, twenty-ten dash oh-one, um, what your findings were, and I know some of them, you said they were, um, partially implemented. What is it that the city needs to do to make sure that they are fully implemented? Um, so that we can make sure that when we get our, um, twenty-twenty-five audit, that, and I know these were prior findings that we were supposed to be working on. Um, so what do we need to do, like, for twenty, um, twenty-four oh-one? I know.
Your recommendation.
That cause was, it says, um, no compliance with the city's policies and standards, and it was a recommend. Uh, so what management should reinforce? So, what is it that, um, or I guess, how do we need to document it so that you all can see that this is taking place now? I guess that's my question. And I don't know if you can give us that or not, but I guess maybe that's what I'm trying to understand, so it won't be on the, um, on here, on the audit again.
Well, first of all, thank you so much. I'm doing well. Nice to meet you. Uh, very great question, very insightful question, and I might imagine the manager may, um, have some follow-up. Uh, what we would like to see is exactly what you said, is to be able to see the documentation of those procedures, not only documented and updated, but also effectuated. Um, we did give, uh, credence to the work that the new manager has done and staff with moving the ball forward, uh, but we have not gotten to a place yet, uh, under audit where we can consistently see and be okay with knowing that those credit card purchases are in a form and fashion that stands above audit. And so what I would say through the manager, through finance, is continue to be very diligent and making sure that staff, uh, electeds, uh, management-appointed officials follow every protocol for a credit card and any expense, and making sure that those are documented, signed off in a fashion, so that when we come to audit, when we take our sample, we can see unequivocally that all of those policies and procedures were done and signed up on. And yes, we are looking forward to the date when we can clear, uh, especially some of these older findings, twenty-fourteen, twenty-ten, twenty-seventeen, so we can get these off the books and, and move forward.
Thank you. I, Mr., um, City Manager, for the, um, recommendation says manager reinforced compliance with the city's policies regarding purchases and use of credit cards. Is all staff, including commission, going to be trained on the credit card policy to make sure that we are all on the same page and have it documented when whoever decides to do the training so that this can kind of be cleared up, that there is some type of a training for this?
Yes, Vice Mayor, and, and the answer is that we've already started with, uh, some internal training. There'd be a, there'd be a need to, as we going through the budget cycle for next fiscal year. The, met with the department heads as late as yesterday, indicating that they should put, uh, additional training dollars in to make sure all these, all the policies that's associated with this audit and other audits have the actual training needs in place, so we can make sure we can start the training that's needed and actually start putting this in place.
But this would be something in-house, right? We wouldn't need to wait for the next year for this, right? This is something we could start right away, because this is a in-house policy, right?
We've already started.
Okay.
We've already started, and if, if you take a look at the, the current year finding, as Mr. Harvey indicated, there's, there's just this particular one. It's twenty-twenty-four. And the, in the years, kind of precede the number of, uh, findings. So, there was one finding in twenty-twenty-four that dealt with credit cards, and, uh, under condition, they actually during the audit, they, they had samples of, they did two samples of purchases made with the city's credit card, and they showed two things in those samples, two transactions with no vendor invoice. And there were two transactions that lacked the appropriate level of approval before purchases occurred. What we're finding is when, uh, just say, for instance, when we use vendor, when we use vendors and we utilize a credit card as a method of payment, from time to time, and we've done a better job on doing this, from time to time, there may be, uh, a void of asking for a receipt. And what we found is that if you don't get that receipt right away, it's very, very difficult to get it six months later. So, we've been training staff of the significance of making sure that you have a receipt when you, when you return or when you get, when you have the purchase. And the other part of it is that two transactions lack the appropriate level of approval. So, in our procurement process, we've, we've found. So in our procurement process, we've, we've found in the past, and, and, and this showing itself in this last, this twenty twenty four audit, that the level of approvals have not properly been signed off on. So there's a need to do better in that area, and those areas are trainable, as you just described, and we're in the process, or we've already started training. We're doing a lot better, but there's still a need to um, comply fully with that.
On the receipt portion of it, how would staff, I'm just asking, forget or not get a receipt from a purchase they have made of a card? I mean, I'm just trying to see what Stroose's staff may have came up with just for that particular instances.
Okay. Mr. Martin, would you mind giving, giving example of what we, what we just described?
Yeah, there are instances.
As you know, Mr. Martin is the interim finance director for the city.
Well, I think should be director, but I've been here for three years. I have been going to two, two audits from, from the OIG and the state and uh, four financial audits. So uh, I think it's a little bit unfair, unfairly treated. But going back to the question, uh, yes, sometimes the user of the cards do not ask for the receipt. And we've been communicating, additional training is needed really. Uh, it, it, it is reflected all across the board that uh, they have to go over the, the receipt. Not only get the receipt, but go over it, because sometime the receipt and uh, reflect taxes, things that true, be charged to the city. So those, those are, we, area what, where uh, across the board, uh, training is, is needed.
May, I ask, um, do we know how many credit cards we have for each department? And my reason for asking that, because I would think um, that fit mainly just department heads. Uh, um, and my second part of that question, when they're receiving the training, are we documenting, having them sign that they receive training for uh, credit card usage policies and stuff?
Yeah, with the new, with the new policy, the updated policy of the credit card, they will have to sign. Sign and acknowledging receipt, read of the policy and training.
And even apart with the taxes, um, that uh, a part of the training should make sure that they are aware that they should receive a copy of the tax exempt form, so when they're making those purchases, um.
Yeah, it's.
That they should receive uh, the tax exempt, so we're not.
It's, it's, it's provided, and I, I'll give you another example. And I know all of you, except probably Commissioner Scott, may have experienced this at one point. When you, when you go to conferences and you do your housing and your trap, your housing mostly, um, when, when Ms. Clark pre-register and, and do registration for the conference and for the hotels, we provide the hotels a copy of the tax exempt form, uh, so there shouldn't be no sales tax attached to it. But what we ask you to do as members of the commission is to bring those receipts back. If you don't check those receipts, oftentimes, even with them having a sale tax exemption form, they still will include the taxes on their final receipt. So if we don't, if you're not checking to make sure that those sales taxes are not in place, oftentimes, we bring back and sales taxes are included, and it's very, very difficult to get that done after the fact. So one of the things that we, we'll, we'll impress upon even the members of the commission is to make sure you're checking that, make sure you have a, a copy electronic version of the sales attack, sales exempt form on your phones or on your computers, and be reminded to provide that a second time when you go into conferences, even though it's been uh, pre-arranged. Oftentimes, when you're checking out, they'll give you information that's not accurate.
And that's good, you letting us know, Mr. Jackson, because when we started, we didn't know that information, because I know a couple of times I've gone and it did, and you know, Ms. Clark let me know now, hey, make sure that they don't have no taxes on there, and they've had the taxes, and I've had to go back and speak with them about removing the taxes, but originally, that was like, again, we never had that training or orientation so that we can, we, to know that or to be aware of that. And so now, you know, I know since she's been here, I've been working with, you heard she'll say, make sure, even though I did pre-registration, make sure that they didn't have the taxes on there. Sometime they've had them on there, and they'll say, we have to go see the manager or whoever, and I try to get, you know, try to get the receipts without it being on there. Or they'll say, okay, can you give us her email address and we'll mail it to her, but thanks for letting us know that, because that a lot of, I, I know, I didn't know that in the beginning.
Yeah, those, those, those are just two, two examples of how you can be flag in an audit when those things appear.
But I do try to get a receipt though, because I do know that she needs receipts for everything, so I do try to get a receipt. So I guess back to Mayor Bab's question, how is it that staff order or get something to say, hey, we got this, but we don't have a receipt, knowing that it has to be accounted for?
Pretty, pretty much similar, just say for instance, if we go into Home Depot and it says credit card purchase, if you don't get that receipt when you return, when you pick up the item when it comes in, if you don't remember to get that receipt, and you come back to Pahokee without it, and it's not flagged until a month or two months later, then that's an opportunity to, where you've lost an opportunity to have a receipt. And it's very, very difficult to go back after the fact and find it.
So is there a process that they, when they come back, they should come back with the receipt? Because I know we have to come back in a charter, and we have to bring all our paperwork within, I think, ten days or five days or something like that. So when we go, we have to go to the clerk, we have to have the receipts with us from reading it. So do, I was just wondering, do they understand that, hey, when you come back, you can't just keep it, you gotta take the receipts and everything over to finance or whoever they have to take it to to make sure?
We understand it, and we've, again, been training and, and reiterating that. Um, we've gotten better, but there's still room to, to improve. And, and, and just before we leave, I just wanna, you were, you were asking about, that was actually the current year finding you were asking about, but the prior year, starting in twenty ten, as listed, these things occurred in those particular annual audits. And I think the last one is twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen.
And we're continuing to work to get those prior years removed.
Uh huh.
Um, we have real strong evidence coming up in next fiscal year to advocate for a few of those to be finally removed. But we're working towards um, taking those prior years off as best as we can. There will be challenges with the Marina and the camp and the cemetery, as it's been reiterated a couple of times in Mr. Harvey's presentation, and those are primarily due because of the nature of those accounts. It's more business related, and we're really depending on uh, revenues coming in to substantiate and, 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 and complete those areas. So those weaknesses will be in place until we're able to generate the adequate revenue to cover some of those efficiencies.
But for the cemetery, remember, I, we asked, I know, we voted that you bring it back to see if we were able to lease it out, sell it, or do whatever with it, and I know that's still on here.
Yes.
So when we get that information, whenever you bring it to the commission, I'm hoping it's soon, because it's being on every report, that we can see what can we do?
Yes.
Because like, we have the Marina up there now, we don't have it, we haven't even put it out for a bid or anything, but to see what, you know, we can do to try to, at least with some of the weaknesses, because I think also, one of my questions I would like to ask, the um, the um, cemetery is always in a negative, and I think we've asked before, I would like to see itemized what expenses we have at the cemetery that keeps causing the cemetery to go. Um, because I did see where it says that we don't have uh, proper records, w- w- documentation here, how we even keeping records? So I just want, like to see uh, itemized how, what are the expenses at the cemetery? And how are we documenting the records and keeping, because I did see that here, um, in this report as well. So I would just like to know how are we documenting that to know what we're spending, what, huh?
Explain.
Um.
Because there are improvement, there's a substantial improvement with the cemetery uh, fund, uh.
Where did I see that at, um, for the cemetery?
The twenty twenty.
The twenty, yeah, the twenty ten dash oh one. It says. It says we recommend the city implements the following for the cemetery form. Um, they don't develop and maintain perpetual inventory records, uh, annual physical count of inventories. Like, I would like to see, what do we have, what are we spending out? So I would just like for that to come to the commission. So I know it keeps saying it going in a deficit, but as a commissioner, I'm trying to figure out, what are we going in a deficit with, if I don't, I don't know what the expenses of the cemetery is?
Yeah, that, that finding, the finding, Vice Mayor, finding twenty ten oh one relate to mainly the inventory. The, the, I think the clerk uh, in the past have uh, looked to uh, implement different software with mapping of the, the inventory at the cemetery. They have not uh, recently, uh, they, they still continue to look, but they are not satisfied with some of the, the, the mapping for the cemetery. So this is something, until and when we have proper software to keep track of the, the lots of the cemetery, that, that finding will continue.
So what are we doing in the meantime, though? How are we tracking it, because then that mean it'll be on here again?
They have an Excel, they, the. The young lady at the cemetery have an Excel where they're recorded, but it's not really complete. It's incomplete.
Well, I'm, I'm reading the effect of this, it says, because of inadequacies in internal controls and accounting records related to the cemetery fund, we were unable to form opinions regarding the amounts of inventories, accounts receivable, service revenues, and cost of goods and sold, goods sold for the fund. In other words, uh, that sounds like to me, but correct me if I'm not wrong, it's just a matter of mostly document, keeping documentation.
Page seventy nine.
Same, the same one, twenty ten oh one, same one.
The seventeen?
Seventy nine.
Yeah, twenty ten oh one.
Under the effect, the effect.
Uh, I, Mr. Harvey, Mr. Harvey? Can you ask Mr. Harvey to?
Mr. Harvey, are you there? Mrs. Dillard, Mr. Mr. Harvey?
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, could you check to see if Mr. Harvey's still on, or if he's on mute? They have a question regarding the finding of the cemetery.
He's still, he's still on, he joined, he's on mute, let me try to get his attention.
All right, thank you.
I mean, he's providing the information, but I'm, me reading that, just thinking that's just a matter of us just keeping proper, appropriate records as to accounts being receivable and, and.
Do improvement made, however, he can't, well, that's.
And I guess my question is, it wasn't. Maybe.
Lots of improvement have been made through this finding, but is, is this question when it's fully satisfied to remove it? So you can address this question to him.
And I, I know we have a staff down there, this, uh, I'll wait till he get back, I'm still waiting on him, but um, the staff that's down there, how do we, uh, who keeps record of what? Says somebody have a burial, keeping the counts receivable and.
Well, that, that part.
Who actually does that? And do we have that?
This finding, when that finding happened in twenty ten, a lot of improvement has been made.
That's what we're asking for you to explain it to us.
Well, yeah, the, the question is, is Mr. Harvey, he is the independent auditor. Is it this question of when he wants, is it this question of when he wants to remove, when he's satisfied and when to remove the finding? So it, it is best for you to ask this question to them.
Well, we waiting on him, then she's trying to get him back on the phone.
Okay, I'm, I'm here, I'm here, I've been here the whole time, I just was having some difficulty. So the matter revolves around, once we are able to conclude test and be certain that the finding is clear, we will remove it. Uh, one of the things we do is every year, we will check in with management and finance and say, hey, you all give us an assessment of what's been done. They will reply back in, you know, a number of days, weeks, with what their assessment is, we will then audit it. And so we will do the same thing next year, we will email them and say, hey, here's the findings from prior years. What have you done, tell us, what have you done over these past two hundred and seventy days to cure this matter? They will say it, we will then audit it, and if we agree that things have been done in an appropriate fashion, we will clear the finding. Uh, a lot of times, management is very, and finance is very transparent and say, hey, Harvey, we've started some things, but we have not been able to get our whole hands around it. And so um, once they get their arms around those procedures and changes and implements, implementations, we will audit it and, 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 and give, give even flexibility, I'm willing to say that on the record, to getting these things done and clear.
Mr. Mr. Harvey, Mayor Bab, same question that the Vice Mayor asks on, on the cemetery. Uh, on those finding currently, I know some improvement, and the finance director have already mentioned some of the improvements, but what do you see as the most pressing issue for the cemetery to be removed from that category? Uh, is it more the record keeping, uh, what is it so that the commission also would be familiar and know what's needed at the cemetery?
So the two enterprise funds and the, that, great question, Mayor. As the manager stated, we, the, the essence of the finding with Marina and cemetery is having a deficit. And so if we can have an accounting that shows even one dollar, and I'm being technically uh, specific, one dollar in, in plus surplus, then the finding is clear. So the accounting, the revenue, the, and I like the question that the commissioner asked about the expenses, to make sure those expenses are allocated and tracked appropriately to say, okay, if Marina may pick a number a hundred thousand, and if the expenses total ninety nine thousand five hundred, then we have a surplus. And if we can do that for one year in one of both of those funds, then there's no longer a deficit and that finding clears. And so it is really an accounting function fiction to be able to show money in, expenses out, and hopefully have a surplus.
Yes, that's.
Okay, all right, my, and I guess my next question is, um, the deficit. Um, I see it, I see it says two thousand and ten, so when we're doing our budget, that deficit carries over until we get out of a deficit, or do, is, are we looking at a year-to-year budget? As far as, um, okay, say if this past year, uh, all counts receivable, we have everything in place. Um, I'm just trying to understand how that works.
So, great question, but I have to split the baby. So the finding started many moons ago, we will assess that finding every year. Uh, on its own for that year to determine if the prior finding, the finding I think was wrote in twenty ten or twenty fourteen, if it still stands, that's one. The other half of the baby is exactly what you said, we will look at not budget. There's a difference between budget to actual, budget is what you're going to do, that's great. What we look at is what was done.
What was done, exactly.
What was done, if we can show a surplus of a dollar or greater, then for cemetery and Marina, then we are good to go as far as clearing that finding from many moons ago and current to show that the uh, s- s- cemetery and Marina is now in a surplus fashion.
Okay, and I, and I guess the other part of that question, that deficit, does it continue to carry over until we finally show that one dollar plus?
No, it's, it's done on an annual basis, yes.
Right, amen, yes, on an annual basis.
So, yeah, I guess it's back to my original question, I heard part of your answer, but uh, we were looking at, so basically, it's a matter of just keeping records, as far as, like I said, when I was reading the effect of this, it said the basic, of because of the inadequacies in internal, internal control and accounting records related to the cemetery fund, we are unable to uh, form regarding the amounts of the inventory, accounts receivable and service revenue. So my main question is, that's just a matter of record keeping to document, hey, what came in and what went out as far as what, for the cemetery?
So, I'm laughing because that's a really great question, but again, I'm gonna split the baby on you. So, yes, the record keeping is paramount, that's important, that we're able to assess, uh, just as you said, money in, money out. The other half is. The other half is, in true economic fashion, the city, those two business funds must show, uh, profit. So the record keeping, good, bad, and different. If there is a loss.
Still have to show a profit.
Then, then we still are in the same bucket.
I agree, I understand that part.
Okay.
You go ahead.
Uh, both of the enterprise fund, meaning the Marina and the cemetery, the revenue is not sufficient to support the expenditures.
And that's fine. If you can provide us with that, I think we've been asking it. So we can at least look at it to see what are the expenditures for the cemetery? That's what I want to see. Itemize expenditures for the cemetery. Maybe we can look at it and maybe we can come up with some ways to see how we can kind of help this. If we don't know what the expenditures are, as a commission, we can't help. So that's what I would, um, recommend, that it provide us with itemized expenses for the cemetery and the Marina, so that we can see what.
Yeah, that's fine. That will be provided. But however, I will also recommend, uh, ways to generate additional revenue.
That's good.
That's good.
Okay. One, one of the things, and I think you're, you do receive that during the quarterly updates. You, we do show each, uh, account in the city, in each fund in the city. And in that showing, we show, um, the existing versus what was budgeted and what's, uh, actual for the fiscal year. So in those quarterly updates, you do receive that information that you're requesting.
It's not itemized to say, okay, on plots, we spent this much on this. That's what I'm asking for, itemized, so we can actually see. I understand what you're saying. We started with this and this is what we have. And I want, I would like to see itemize what are our actual expenses at the cemetery is what I would actually like to see.
Okay.
My next question I have for the auditor on page eighty, under finding two thousand fourteen dash oh four. That he says these have to be reported under the government, um, non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. Okay, the first one says, some payments were not made resulting in a, um, payment of late fees and finance charges. And then it says, accounting records did not identify the public purpose for certain transactions. So I guess my question would be, and Mr. Jackson, I guess, does, or the auditor, does that mean that the, um, we're not paying the bills on time? Is it that we're not getting them on time? Or, I guess trying to understand why are we paying late payments? And then I guess the second one, the accounting records did not identify the public person, purpose for certain transactions. So I'm just trying to figure out how is that taking place or transactions taking place and it's not stating what they are for? So how are we able to do these transactions if we are not stating what they are for? How are we knowing how the dollars are being spent? So I guess if I can get an explanation for that.
Well, if, if you will, and Mr., um, Martin, you can jump in at any point. Some payments were not paid timely. Uh, as you very well know it, and, and again, this is the twenty, audit ending twenty twenty-four.
Right.
You very well know there was some stagnation in dollars coming in from, from the state because of some of the other audit issues that we had.
So the state charged us late fees, I guess. I thought I was thinking about, I'm thinking about when you're saying late fees, I'm thinking about other bills that we're having.
You misunderstanding what I'm saying.
Mention is probably the cash flow issue.
Right.
It's, it's not really. It's a cash flow issue when the money was, uh, when there was sanction.
Oh, so this was when we, the state wasn't giving us money and we didn't have the cash flow to pay the bills?
Right. Some of those caused late payments because there was no, uh, generation of adequate revenues to pay some of the bills at the time. And the accounting records did not identify, that, that goes to proper coding. When you're, gotta make sure again that the departments and the city is properly coding, uh, activities that's being utilized for purchase. Uh, just say for instance, if, if we're buying paper and it's coded under a different process, under a different category, that will cause, uh, something like this to say that's not purposely identified. So we just have to make sure that the coding is accurate and that it matches up with our, um, procurement process.
I guess I should, I guess then that leaves me to ask a question. So when ordering is taking place, do the, whoever is ordering, it doesn't come to the city manager or the finance? I mean, cause I don't know what the process is. So they wouldn't look at it prior to it being ordered? So that mean the department head can just go and order anything?
No.
Or to catch it? You see what I'm saying? To kind of catch it before it goes out?
No, I'm, I'm not necessarily, this, this can be an individual item or it can be a bulk item. So I personally don't see every code and every, um, for every transaction that comes through, comes through the city. I personally don't see it. We have accounts payables, accounts receivables, and the overall accounting, uh, finance department that pretty much handles those, those activities.
So I guess my question still is, before the order takes place, it still doesn't have a process that it goes through to make sure that it had, you know what I'm saying? It has everything so that we don't, you know what I'm saying? So it don't show up on a audit, that it has, what's the purpose for this? If we're ordering paper, okay, this is for the commission. Or we are ordering paper towels, this is for, you see what I'm saying? So I guess that's what I'm asking. So that, I know it's something small that we can fix, but that's, I was just wondering, is it a process that before anything is ordered, does it go through a process or do department heads or whoever just get the order and then bring everything back to, I guess whoever the paperwork goes to? I guess that's my question.
No, we, we ob- obviously have an accounting system, uh, to track purchases and, and things of that nature. I, I'm not sure, Mr. Martin, if you want to try to explain it to her in a, in a different way she can.
Well, uh, I, I, I think it's best if Mr. Harvey, uh, addressed that finding. Mr. Harvey?
Um, I, 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 I think it was addressed par- fairly well. Uh, w- w- I guess what I would add is the timing of it, that's a snapshot finding from twenty fourteen. I believe we deemed, not I believe, we deemed it as partially implemented. And so I'm hopeful in the next cycle, audit twenty twenty-five, we will be able to clear that finding, uh, by standing on the current work of the manager and finance. So it's, it's two things at play. It's, it's a, it's a prior year finding from many moons ago, ten years ago. Uh, but it's also being assessed now. And so there's just some things that need to be done. And I think the manager, not I think the manager did a great job of articulating the training and the sign offs and the things that's to come. And when those things are done, signed, and set off, and we can see it in the audit work throughout, the audit samples throughout, we'll be able to clear not only that finding, but several other others.
That's a good question, uh, um, how many, uh, I'm just going back to the credit card ones. How many credit cards and stuff do we have out there as far as the different departments and stuff? I know you might not know it off the top of your head, but.
No, uh, I could, I could safely say that there is probably a credit card within each department. Is that safe to say?
And who have access?
Department heads.
Say what?
Commissioners and department heads.
Have a credit card. I don't have one either.
They stay at city hall.
Yes, you do. All, all, all credit cards are held at city hall.
Okay.
We, we, that, I guess we need to clear that up. They are assigned department heads and they're also held at city hall. Yeah.
And who has access to u- utilize them as far as, um, to make sure that we get the, uh, appropriate documents and?
That's done through the department heads.
I know the clerk is responsible for us. We go through the card sheet.
So, so if, so if I'm understanding that right, department head, if somebody needs to go purchase something, he can give that card to one of his employees? Or do he have to, or she have to make that purchase to keep, to make sure all the checks and balances are in place?
It's ultimately responsibility of the department head. But there, there have been instances where the department head would, um, just say send someone to pick up an item that's been ordered or, or needs in, in delivery. So it's, it's been from time to time that those have been used by, uh, people within the department.
Oh, so that mean everybody need to be trained on the credit card policy?
No, every, everybody didn't have, everybody doesn't have access. We're usually, it's usually the department head or the assistant depart- assistant.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll concentrate on the department heads first.
But to, to that effect, I will strongly recommend, uh, training and following the procedures and across the board.
So that mean in twenty twenty-five, we should see a lot of this clearing up, cause we're, cause it does say, I see where it says that policy has been updated and partially implemented. So that mean twenty twenty-five, our audit gonna get shorter. The report should get shorter and shorter.
Absolutely, that's the goal. And if you, if you, and I'm sure, um, Mr. Harvey alluded to this a minute ago. As auditing, um, last year's audit and future audit, they have to look at external, other external, um, processes. And, uh, they're, they, they've looked at the J-LAC and some of the other things that occurred. And you'll see some similarities in, in their findings. And it's kind of pairing up with a lot of things that the joint legislative, uh, audit and also the, uh, from the spec- inspector general's report. So there, you'll see some common, commonalities in, in some of the findings.
And my last question is, I know it said in here, Mr. Jackson, just to be, make sure I'm clear. It says a lot of the policies has been updated. Now, will these, cause the policy's gonna come to the commission, right? So that we can see that they've been approved, so that there's no, you know, questions, hey, the commissioner? Cause I don't want to be able to say, oh, I never saw that. I'm not sure what you're talking about. So all the updates will be coming to the commission, correct? Like this is the old language and this is the new language, so that, okay.
Anything that's updated will, will come for you, come to you for approval. Again, this is all of the updates as of twenty fourteen reflected in this twenty fourteen, year ending twenty fourteen audit.
Mayor, before we go, I would like to make one comment, uh, for the greater good.
Yes, sir.
Want to definitely acknowledge the elected officials through the manager's office and finance. Uh, this is the first year in a while that the annual audit will be submitted on time before state statute. And so there is definitely applause needed and should be given, uh, because finance has worked hard, the manager has worked hard. Uh, of course, your elected officials have given leadership. And, uh, we too have worked to make sure that, uh, no longer is the city of Pahokee's audit past the deadline. And so, uh, we are very excited to be a part of this success and getting the, uh, getting caught up on, uh, the annual audits and submissions to the state. And so no more letters from J-LAC, uh, will be coming because this audit is gonna be on time. So thank you, Mayor, for allowing me a point of privilege and, uh, hats off to everybody on the city side.
And thank you for those comments too. And we're certainly excited that this audit is on time and will be submitted to the state on time and we won't be, uh, late. So we're, we're very excited about that. And we do thank staff and we do thank you and of course, the commission as a whole.
I just want to say thank you to this auditing firm as well for all your hard work and coming in, rolling your sleeves up and working with us, making sure that, you know, we stay on track. And to the, um, city manager and all the staff, um, for all their hard work. Because I know it's a lot of work pulling all these documents together. So I just, as a vice mayor, want to say thank you for all your hard work, doing your best for the city of Pahokee and keeping us and getting us back on the right track and that we're staying on the right track. So I want to say thank you to city manager and your staff for all that you're doing for the city of Pahokee.
Thank you.
And ditto. Um, again, just want a short thank you to, as far as the auditing firm and as well as the staff, city staff, city manager, um, for getting us on the right track with this and looking forward to moving forward.
Thank you.
And we don't have any residents from the public for public, uh, comments if they have an opportunity to at least provide any.
So we, um, the resolution is on the table now?
Right.
Okay.
Oh, the resolution?
Yes.
So at this time, commissioners, we have had our city clerk properly read the resolution into record, had the city manager properly explain it, had the auditors prop- properly, uh, go over it. What is your pledge as far as this resolution?
Mayor Bab, I move that we accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight.
Second.
It is been moved by vice mayor and properly second by Commissioner McPherson for the adoption of this audit report. Call for question? Here and none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Calvin Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden. Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
And Mayor Bab.
Yes. Prior adjournment, Commissioner Bolden, did you have any final comments that you wanted to make? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
A brief comment on, on my part, um, on, on our part, we had a very ambitious, uh, objective in terms of completing the audit work. And we were doing well. And then, uh, Mr. Jackson brought it to our attention that we had fallen behind. And I know that, uh, there was some pressure. And to keep it brief, uh, the line or the business that we're in, we were subject to pressure in, uh, that June thirtieth deadline. And, uh, it just came down to, we promised, or we said we were gonna do it by X date and we did fall behind by a couple of weeks. And, uh, I would also like to stress that it wasn't on part of, of, uh, Mr. Jackson and, uh, finance. They did their part. And, uh, on our end, we just fell behind in terms of meeting that li- deadline. So my apologies to the finance department, uh, and also to the commission as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
I really thank you for that.
At this time, I.
I didn't want to say that on record.
Yeah. I appreciate it.
I entertain a motion for the adjournment of the meeting.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved to second. Call for question, here and none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Calvin Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden. Commissioner McPherson.
Yes.
And Mayor Bab.
Yes. Meeting adjourned at five oh eight PM. Thank you.